And I gotta push my button. Welcome to the May nineteenth Planning Board meeting. Welcome to the public that is here and we will proceed with our meeting. If you're able to, please join us in reciting the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all and Doreen, would you call the roll, please?
Rick Minkin.
Here.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Roger Beely.
Yeah.
James Hebert.
Here.
Bennett Flanders.
Here.
And Tyler Davis.
Here via Zoom.
Thank you. And so tonight we're missing Jen and therefore Ben, you've been promoted to a voting member for this meeting. Thank you all for attending and moving right into our business. We were provided the minutes from the meeting in April and I would entertain a motion to enter those into the record.
So moved.
Thank you, Rachel. Do I?
Second.
Second from Ben. Thank you. Any discussion? I just want to say the minutes from my experience have been well prepared and I appreciate the diligence that you do, Doreen. So thank you very much. I have no comment. So you want to take a roll call vote?
Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
James Hebert.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders.
Yes.
Thanks, folks. All right, now let's move to the items for consideration. We have four point oh one, a consent item. This is for Preservation of Affordable Housing LLC on Lot Six, Three Eye Home, also called Sturgeon Place, is requesting a site plan approval, extension, reapproval of their previous approved site plan for fifty-one units of housing for disabled individuals located at the intersection of Scarborough Downs Road and Market Street, Assessor's Map R fifty-two, Lot Four. And I believe Helen, you're taking this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You've covered the majority of it, but yes, this is a site plan approval extension request from the applicant. It was initially approved in June of two thousand and twenty-three and it was extended in March of last year. So the current extension on this ends on June fifth. So they're seeking another site plan approval extension due to some funding holdups. And I believe that, I guess we don't have the applicant available.
Oh, no.
As they, yeah. So that's what's happening. It's a federal funding. They're waiting on some things.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit chaotic when we're talking about federal funding. Understandable. Do we, how long is this extend? How long now do we move this project out to?
This will actually be a reapproval, so it will start over and they will have the full.
So they'll have the full.
And then we can do a twelve month extension.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you for that. Since the applicant is not here, do you want to speak on behalf, Drew? I hope they're paying you for this.
I will. I'll be sure of that. It's unviable. Yeah. Drew Gagnon with Coral Palmer, representing Preservation of Affordable Housing. I don't have much more to add to it other than it's a green funding source that's was frozen by federal action and where the applicant's hopeful that that funding will be released within the next coming months. That federal court action just happened. So it's still take a few months to close and get the construction once that funding is released at the same time. But that's really the premise of the extension request is just the the federal holdup of that funding. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thanks, Drew. I'll turn this over to members of the board if they have any comments. Everybody pretty good. I just, I feel bad that we have some of these restrictions with federal funding and understand the predicament. Still think this is a really, really super project hitting a perfect demographics. So without any ado, I do have a prepared motion. It's the same motion that we read originally. Bear with me because I guess for the record we have to do this in full. So I move to approve the application for site plan approval of the plan titled Three Eye Home at the Downs, prepared by Coral Palmer dated five twenty-two, twenty-three, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The project will include construction of a sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy square foot, fifty-one unit affordable apartment complex for physically disabled persons. The project is located near the intersection of the down roads and Market Street as well as the proposed Lot Six of the Town Center subdivision. The board finds that per CBD CPD zoning district standards, the use can be adequately served by fewer parking spots than required by the zoning ordinance. The applicant has provided two restriping exhibits that would increase parking on-site from fifty-one spaces to sixty-two and sixty-eight spaces respectfully, respectively, and shown alternative transportation provisions available in the development area. The request was originally approved on six, five, twenty-three and received an approval extension on three, twenty, twenty-four, which set to expire at six, five, twenty-five. The planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance with the following conditions. As such, it adapts and adopts and incorporates the findings of the staff memo dated six, five, twenty-three. Waivers: Site Plan Review Ordinance Section four, D five, C, to allow twelve point three percent parking lot landscape coverage where fifty fifteen percent is the standard. Number two, the Site Plan Ordinance Section four, D two, to reduce the minimum drive aisle from twenty-five to twenty-four feet. And number three, the Site Plan Ordinance Section four, DB one, D, to reduce the driveway location from tangent point of the curb radius of cross street from a hundred and twenty-five feet to a hundred and seventeen feet. Conditions: The board is located on the proposed subdivision, which has not yet been approved by the board. If the subdivision yields, is that right?
This project.
Yeah, but didn't we already approve? It says it's not been approved, but.
This is the old one. It's fine.
I'll just say because it's from the original. Okay, bear with me. If the subdivision process yields changes that affect the site plan, a site plan amendment is required. Number two, if at any time after construction of the development of the planning department determines the actual need for parking exceeds the number of spaces actually developed, the planning department may order the owner of the property to restripe the spaces shown in Exhibits one and two. If the applicant wishes to appeal this decision, the need for further spaces via restriping per Exhibit one and two shall be reviewed by the planning board. Number three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall formalize a grading easement to the adjacent lot currently proposed as Lot One for the Town Center subdivision. B, provide a three to eight year landscaping maintenance plan as discussed in the staff memo dated six, five, twenty-three. C, the applicant shall execute and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in Appendix One of the Town of Scarborough Charter four nineteen, post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance. D, update the plan set to, as discussed at the six, five, twenty-three Planning Board meeting. This includes with respect to: One, providing snow removal plan and addition, adding notation for snow from plowable events will be removed from the site. And two, excluding three onsite parking spaces from parking calculations. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Four, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit evidence in the form of a letter or or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities, or supervised the plan and facilities construction and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the stormwater management facility have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan and that they function as intended by said plan. Prior to, five, prior to the issuance of a signed permit, the applicant shall provide a final signage plan. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Number six, prior to the start of construction, a preconstruction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. All plan modifications are to be completed prior to scheduling the preconstruction meeting. Post-approval items of note. Number one, no occupancy for full or partial occupancy shall be issued by the code enforcement officer until the town engineer, town planner, or their designee are satisfied that the property has been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan and condition of approval, or that the town has received a performance guarantee for the completion of the specific outstanding site element within a specified timeframe. Number two, final approval shall expire one year from the date of such approval unless the applicant has started substantial construction. The town planner may extend final approval for one additional year for good cause, provided a written request for extension is submitted before the expiration of the approval. At his option, the town, at her option, the town planner may refer any request for extension to the planning board for decision. That's the motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rachel. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Ben.
I just have a quick question. I guess given that it's been two years since we approved this and we've had some updates to the ordinances, does anything need to be? Probably hasn't changed anything affecting in this specific motion, but I want to make sure that we're not like referencing an old standard or something. I haven't gone through and looked at Section four, D five, C, whatever is exactly the same as it was then.
Well, I'm going to defer to you.
Although, because I know there's been some changes. There have been some changes, but I'm still going to be able to honor the existing approval if that's okay with you all. That's, that's fine.
That's fine with me if that's permitted for us to do that. I just want to make sure we're crossing our Ts.
I think we can do that.
Great.
Okay.
If I could also note that under conditions, number one, if a subdivision process, which I would assume includes any changes, in other words, whatever is the new subdivision process, yields changes that affect this site plan, a site plan amendment is required. So if the planning board, excuse me, if the planning director believes that there's been enough change, I would assume she would bring it back to us as as per this draft motion.
Yeah, right.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else? Doreen, you want to call the roll, please?
Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
James Hebert.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Moving on to four point oh two, another consent item. Crossroad Holding LLC is requesting subdivision amendment approval extension, reapproval of their previously approved subdivision amendment plan for Phase Three. of their previously approved subdivision amendment plan for Phase Three. Second Amendment of the Downs Town Center District located on Scarborough Downs Road, Assessor's Map, R fifty-two, Lot four. And Helen, you're taking this one as well.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as you mentioned, this is a reapproval request from the applicant for the Downs Town Center subdivision, Second Amendment. And the applicant was unable to meet the ninety day requirement to record the subdivision after its initial approval by this board in December. So they're seeking a reapproval and the applicant is available for any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to make any? I guess so. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Dan Bacon here on behalf of Crossroads Holdings. It's pretty simple. We're, there's a ninety day period, so a pretty short time period between approval, which was in February, and the need to record the subdivision plan. We've been feverishly working on performance guarantee and our estimates to get to the, to the town. We expect to do that in the next few weeks and record the plan right after your reapproval in the next few weeks. We just couldn't meet the time crunch of the ninety days. So we're seeking reapproval with all the same conditions, exact same plan, et cetera, that you approved back in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So I anticipate we'll probably see some plans to sign next, next time we're here.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks. All right, any comments from the board? Go ahead.
Yeah, again, I wonder how long this approval is for?
Another ninety days.
Thank you.
Got a change in the motion? Anybody else? You all set? Ben? Good? This is a long one. Yeah, you can start.
I move to approve the Second Amendment of the Downs Town Center subdivision proposed by Crossroads Holdings LLC. The project is depicted in plan sets prepared by Coral Palmer dated twelve thirty, twenty twenty-four. Findings: The amendment constitutes the third phase of the Town Center subdivision at the Downs. The proposed Third Amendment includes the expansion of Lot Two to the north, the creation of Lots ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and includes the proposed roadway improvements to the remaining Scarborough Downs Road segment that connects to the roundabout previously presented in Phase Two. The board finds that the project meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance zoning ordinance and the Downs Town Center master plan as amended January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, with the waivers and conditions as below. The applicant is requesting waivers related to the construction of Downs Road, which is regulated by Section seven oh one Town Street Acceptance Ordinance. Section five point D of the ordinance states, "Design standards herein shall be used for all road and street standards in the town unless otherwise agreed to and permitted in writing by the planning board." Reclamation, section of Downs Road. Waivers relative to this construction typical section include: Number one, minimum center line grade. Chapter seven oh one requires a minimum of one percent, and the applicant proposes to keep the existing center line slope of the Downs Road from point one percent to point five percent. Applicant requests this reduction in part to limit the impact of the roadway design footprint, the results when raising the road in most areas to achieve the one percent minimum center line grade. For surface drainage considerations, the cross slope of the proposed road has been increased to three percent. Number two, aggregate subbase course. Applicant requests reduction of the fifteen inch subbase core step to be replaced with reclaimed mix and existing type E gravel beneath the existing Downs Road. New public roadway connecting Downs Road and Market Street. Waivers include: Number one, driveway separation waiver. Applicant requests a reduction in the driveway separation standards from ninety feet to eighty-seven feet to accommodate the proposed driveway and truck apron opening along the bypass road on the north side of Lot Two. Number two, minimum center line radius. Applicant requests the reduction of minimum center line roadway radius from one hundred and fifty feet to one hundred and forty-five feet. Conditions: Address, were there, were there any conditions in the original?
I don't think there were.
Okay. Address the comments in the staff review memo dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Address the comments in the Haley Ward review memo dated January seventh, twenty twenty-five. Address the comments in the Barton and Law Judas review memo dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The applicant shall execute and record an updated stormwater maintenance agreement with the town to reference latest approval dates. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in Appendix one of the Town of Scarborough's Chapter four nineteen, Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. This stormwater maintenance agreement confirms responsibility of the applicant of the requirements under the ordinance for the entire subdivision. The revised roadway layout requires an amendment to the approved site plan for Lot One. The stormwater management model and report be updated to reflect current changes with labels and nomenclature in order to establish a record of the updates. Quantitative data related to Willowdale Brook, including but not limited to cross-sectional measurements of the stream throughout the development, upstream and downstream of the project, and each bypass system outfall, will be submitted to the town prior to the pre-construction meeting for this phase of the project. Prior to the release of the subdivision plan for recording, the applicant shall provide a performance guarantee required by Section nine of the Town of Scarborough subdivision ordinance. This shall be reviewed by the town engineer. B, coordinate street names and addressing with E nine one one addressing officer. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to scheduling a pre-construction meeting. Address staff comments in the two eighteen, twenty twenty-five memo. Address traffic solution comments in the memo dated two thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Address Haley Ward comments in the memo dated one seven twenty-five. Provide the final full plan set to the planning department. Payment of all review fees and invoices. Prior to the first certificate of occupancy, the applicant will work with Main DEP to expand the current conservation restriction with Main DEP Area Three to include the remaining area of Open Space D and Open Space E. Provide recorded easement to the town. Submit declaration of covenants. Submit contact information for person responsible for post-construction stormwater inspections and maintenance. All roadway infrastructure improvements shall be completed. This shall be reviewed by the planning department.
You are a much better reader than I am. Congratulate you on the accuracy of that. There you have it, folks. The motion has been read and looking for?
Second.
A second by Rachel. Any discussion? All set on all ends, very well. Dorian, you want to take the role?
McMinchin?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Ojebili?
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders.
Yes.
All right, moving right along. I promise I'll read the next motion as we have. It's even longer, I should have looked before I said that. Teamwork. All right, we're at four point oh three M and R Holdings LLC, Coral Palmer and PCA on behalf of DSM Realty are requesting site plan review for a proposed market basket on Lot Ten located on Scarborough Downs Road, Assessor Map, R fifty-two, Lot four. And I believe, Autumn, you're taking this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We've seen this one a few times now. The applicant is here with us to present some changes since last time. This is, again, of course, an eighty thousand square foot supermarket market basket. It's on a partially eight acre parcel. You reviewed it as sketch plan in February, and then we saw it for a very quick site plan review in April last month. There are several waivers that have been requested as they relate to the sign regulations, parking lot landscaping, foundation landscaping, and fixture height and placement for light fixtures. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant and they can present their changes. Dan, would you like to share your screen?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Right. Thank you. Dan Bacon again here on behalf of M and R Holdings, representing Market Basket DSM Realty. Jim Lamp is here with us this evening on behalf of Market Basket and Drew Gagnon of Coral Palmer as well. As Autumn indicated, we've been before the board a few times now on this site, continue to fine tune the plan and try to be responsive to staff comments and the peer review comments. I think we've satisfied all the various comments that we've gotten so far to, to come to this current layout. So I don't have a large presentation. I actually wanted to just focus on a few different items that came up at the last board meeting, which was pretty late in the evening. So we didn't have a chance to do a larger presentation around a few of those items. And those centered around the, the lighting waiver, and then also kind of pedestrian walkways and connectivity that we didn't fully complete the, the conversation at the last board meeting. I can certainly answer questions around other items as part of your Q and A. But we're pretty excited about where we are in terms of, of this stage of the, the process, and we're hoping for approval this evening. So this is the overall layout that you've seen a few times. And we've prepared some information around the lighting height in particular to kind of help explain the reason for the waiver and also explain how we're mitigating or preventing any impacts to the residential units in the adjacent building. Because that's what's came up at the last board meeting in terms of concern about light and impacts to, to the abutting use. So just to kind of give you a sense of distance and orientation. So this graphic shows, the rectangle is the mixed-use building, which has four stories of residential above a ground floor of commercial. It's on your agenda for the next item on Lot Two. And it's shown with the photometrics plan, which shows the limit of kind of light, the light footprint from the parking lot on Market Basket. So Market Basket's on the left side of this screen, and the building is, is the rectangle there. And it shows the distance of over three hundred feet from where light spill ends on the Market Basket parking lot in the mixed-use building. So we want to kind of give the board that sense of perspective around orientation and distance. So it's over a football field away from where there's any light that, that will be visible. The, one of the reasons, and I think this was talked about briefly at the last meeting, for a slightly taller pole height of thirty feet versus twenty is to not have any hotspots or gaps in coverage in, in the parking lot. So we find it to be a safer layout, so long as it doesn't have impacts on abutters. And we just want to reinforce that to the board. It's typical of parking lots of this kind of scale, so long as it works with neighboring uses. Another thing that we've studied along these lines is the second floor of the residential units is, is the only floor where the units are actually at the level of the lighting or slightly lower. All other units are above thirty feet in height. And on that side of the building, there's only, only eight residential units to kind of give you a sense of that. The other thing that we've looked at and, and tuned up with the lighting plan is shields are provided along this edge of all the lighting fixtures, again, to reinforce not having impacts to the abutting residential users. And in working with Jim and the Market Basket team, the lighting in the parking lot, other than immediate to the Market Basket building, will be turned off thirty minutes after closing of the grocery store. So nine thirty is when the majority of the, the parking lot lighting will be off to not impact others, including that building. And that would pertain to the, to lighting on that edge. To kind of help with understanding distance and also just sort of the vision, the view of lighting fixtures, we provided this in our package. We wanted to provide it in the presentation. So this is a view from the second floor of the mixed-use building, looking towards the, the parking lot, the Market Basket site with thirty-foot poles, and there are fewer of them. But based on the landscaping, the trees, and also the trees in the, in the background, they're not visible, or very visible at all. And in relationship to, this is the, the twenty-foot light poles. So we showed both and showed, and based on our view, there isn't a noticeable difference in terms of the view. There are more poles with a twenty, certainly. But based on the renderings and the distance from the building, there isn't, from our perspective, an aesthetic difference from a, from a view standpoint. And then lastly, we did a cross-section just to, to give the board a sense of a cross-section between the Market Basket building, Retail A and Mixed Use B, and then, of course, added that distance to show the proximity or lack of proximity of the lighting to the Mixed Use B building. So we wanted to touch on that and elaborate a bit based on our material provided in the package. The other thing we wanted to review, and we've, we've talked about this a few times, but we've been really studying and fine tuning our pedestrian circulation within the Market Basket site, but also its connectivity to everything around it. So the Mixed Use B building, the retail building, as well as connections to future buildings that'll be along Market Street, as well as connections out to the larger Town Center District and all the sidewalks and walkways provided for on Market Street, on Scarborough Downs Road. And so highlighted in red are, and we've talked about in the past, there's walkers or shoppers that may be walking to Market Basket from other origins, most notably the residential units that'll be nearby, as well as the larger neighborhood, as well as folks that are going to other establishments. So shown in red are those kind of key pedestrian routes along the, the bypass road over to the sidewalk that goes into the Market Basket on the left side of the screen here. And also in shown in, I guess bluish purple, is a key walkway that goes right down that center drive from a variety of destinations, but most notably Market Street, that brings you essentially to the, to the front door, right near the front door. We see those routes as the key routes for pedestrians coming to and from the store that might not be driving to the parking lot. And think those are appropriate and great means of access to get to the store while, while not having to walk through the parking lot. And within the parking lot, like we've talked about before, we've provided, most people, when they drive to the grocery store, walk down the drive aisle. They may grab a cart, walk down the drive aisle, and then use the cart to get back to your vehicle. So we've expect that to be the norm. But in the case of folks that want to migrate to that center sidewalk, we've provided for that kind of halfway down the center landscaped island and provided open areas, striped areas to get to that sidewalk to use it, should you so choose, and if you're close to that area. We've done that for areas that we think are going to be parked the most, you know, closer to the building. And we have landscaped and quite heavily the, the balance of that island that we think is a good compromise that breaks up the scale of the parking lot. And we don't foresee the southerly half of that landscape island really being a great place for walkers. Because you're, if you're coming from other destinations, you're going to use the other routes that we outlined. You're not likely to meander down through this drive and, and grab that walkway. I also didn't really want to promote a cross, a mid-block crossing in the middle of that drive. It's going to be a busy drive for customers coming in and out. And we have the other safer routes with crosswalks on either end. And I think those are the things we wanted to kind of touch on in particular with our resubmission. Otherwise, we've tried to package this up and be responsive to all the comments. And we're hopeful of planning board approval this evening so we can proceed towards construction later this summer. Happy to answer questions, and I know Jim and Drew certainly are here to answer questions. Should I not be the right person? Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. This item is open for public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to make a comment? The podium is available for three minutes per comment. Anybody online?
No.
Nobody online and anybody from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and open this up to my colleagues. I think because this particular project has four distinct waivers, I I think it would be best if we went around and and just either gave a thumbs up or a thumbs down or a discussion, if warranted, on these waivers. Would you folks be amendable to that process first? And then if you have other comments, we can certainly entertain those or questions to the applicant. All right. I'll start off with the the signage, I think, is is something that is is reasonable. And and certainly, it it's, we've done this before. And it it seems to make sense, given the the location and the size of this building. So I would support the sign regulation. I also feel like the landscape parking, they have done, in my opinion, a great job with the landscaping. And I just want to make sure that and I think there's some conditions that we should place on making sure that that 85% maximum coverage isn't exceeded or or not not at the appropriate level. And the foundation landscaping seems to me to make sense. I think it allows for some flexibility for pedestrian passage. And I'm actually, I appreciate the the work you did in the fixture height. While I was originally very skeptical, being in a town center, having those lights, the the one thing that I will say and ask Dan is, the renditions that you did do, how many years will it take to get to that view? I assume you're not going to plant those trees at the height that you had shown on your rendition.
Yeah, word, and that's between a five and a 10-year.
Five-year and 10-year.
In the foreground, the background, the trees are what will remain in the horizon. So you're you're looking at a combination of parking lot planted landscaping.
Right, on the islands.
Background is the natural woodline.
Sure, but I I'm more I I think my focus is on that mixed-use building and what folks would see out of their window. And and I I I feel like I I can I can live with a 30-foot height, given given the explanation that your team has come forward on. So I guess, in essence, where I stand is, I I don't have any any issues with these waivers. And that's from me. Now I'll turn it over to my esteemed colleagues in no particular order, but if somebody else, Rachel raised her hand, so you have the floor.
Thank you. I had a, I was the one that I think probably had the most problem with the the pathway and the connection. And let me say that I I think you've done a very good job of explaining the rationale behind how you approach that. And I appreciate that, and I have no problem with that. I do have a question on the and a concern on the waiver requested on the sign regulation. It is, you're simply requesting a waiver for the size, for the for the the size of the sign. To what? I mean, how many feet? What's the the waiver for and how is it going to be accommodated? And how do we know that it actually is? Got to check the spelling of complimentary to the the size.
Yeah, we have, and I, if you share the screen again, Autumn, we have the actual dimensions that I can bring up, Rachel. And it's also, so that'll be what is approved, is a specific dimensions and size coupled with the the front facade of the building.
Let me, let me say, if if the waiver is, if this waiver is granted, I would like to see that in a condition of approval.
I'm attempting to share, but it's not, hasn't happened yet, yes. Here we go. So this is what's in the package, and it outlines the dimensions of of the signage that'll be on the front facade. In addition, we would expect the elevations to be approved specifically in terms of showing the location of the Market Basket signage on the building elevations. Because those are already well in design included in your package. And and from an architectural standpoint, I'm not the design architect, but the thinking was, and I think it's true with all the stores, is having the sign be proportional to the to the facade and to to not overwhelm the the building architecture, but to be complementary and in scale and also visible from Market Street. So as you're driving up, that you can see it's a Market Basket. So this shows, Rachel, a view here. It shows the the signage in scale with the facade. And that would be part of your approval as well. If that answers your your question.
Yeah, I I I think it does. I wanted to ensure that it was called out in the in the motion to approve.
Yeah.
I have no problem with the other requests.
Anything else you want to take on? You're all set.
Hmm, I'm I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna think about that. No, I appreciate the the extra landscaping that you've put in on the walkway or where the walkway ends. And I appreciate the the analysis that you did. I'm not entirely convinced that that's the way people are going to walk, because we know that people will take the shortest distance. There may be a perfectly good trail right over here. But if they think this way gets them there faster, they're going to take that. But I, and I wish you luck on trying to figure out how people really are going to be using the walkways. But I appreciate the effort that you've taken and the explanation. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim, or are you okay with him? James, go ahead. I did.
Sorry, I didn't know you were, apologize, Roger. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the first waiver regarding sign regulations, I think that's been discussed with Rachel. I appreciate the discussion on this and the explanation. I don't have an issue with that. Neither would the landscaping required for second waiver or the foundation landscaping required for the third waiver. I want to say thank you, Dan, and Jim and folks on the team for offering the dimming the fixtures by 50% within 30 feet of the building. I think that's a big, that's a big help. And for turning off all the lights in the parking lot, I think that's going to go a long ways for making that place a lot easier for folks to maneuver and create less of a lighting pollution problem. Because again, this is kind of, kind of, kind of my point is that the more development that we're bringing into this town, the more light pollution that's that's really going to be more of an environmental hazard as we go forward. With regard to the building-mounted fixtures, I'll just have a quick clarification real quick. Your fixture types W1 and W2, those should be specified with a it is a, I have the exact screen's being a little small, apologize here. Anyways, the fixtures types W1 and W2 are specified at 70 CRI and 4,000 Kelvin color temperature. That needs to be 80 CRI and 3,000 color color temperature. I think it's a change from 740 to 830 in your specification catalog number. So I'd like to see that address, please. With regard to the height of the fixtures, I'm not in agreement with the with the 30-foot poles. I apologize, but that's that's just my opinion. From a human-scale aesthetic perspective, 20-foot poles feels more human-scale and integrated into a pedestrian-oriented environment, particularly in a commercial setting with a lot of foot traffic in this area. I find 30-foot poles more industrial and imposing to be detracting from sort of a customer atmosphere that a business is striving for in this space and not really sharing the neighborhood use of the mixed-use buildings that are adjacent to it. I appreciate the renderings and the statement that this would save 14 additional light fixtures being installed on the property, but we only got the one single point point-of-view perspective on the render. Why weren't the other photometric calculations included from like the 20-foot pole layout?
We focused on the mixed-use building, because that seemed like at the last discussion, really kind of ensuring compatibility. So that's where we focused kind of our efforts on the photometrics plan. I don't know, Drew, if you had additional information on that, because you play in the lighting space more than me.
I believe the lighting vendor, we provided the 20-foot calculation as part of the original site plan application. I don't think it was re-provided during this initial response or this future response that we had. So I think we could, I, we could dig it back through, but it was in the original application, we provided the 20-foot as well as the 30-foot, showing the comparison of the photometric.
Okay, I guess it was a late meeting last time, so didn't get a chance to go through that deeply enough. I guess my my last point on this, if it's going to take five to 10 years for the trees to come to their full height, who's responsible for replanting the trees, should they die off or need to be replaced?
There's a maintenance plan that comes with, it's on the site plan submission, our landscaping plan. So the property management team is responsible for replacement should die off.
Okay, so at any point, if these start, if they start to go, they will be replaced?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all my comments that I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
Thank you. I have no problems with any of the waivers. Appreciate everything you did to satisfy the comments of the board. Regarding the height of the 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 lights, I just find it kind of interesting, every time we have a project with these 30-foot lights versus the 20, and I can think of four locations in recent years, the applicant has always come forward with showing the advantages of the 30-foot lights. And I can remember, I used to be able to see the lights at the old Kmart for my house in Pleasant Hill. And you've got to be pretty darned close to some of these properties now to see any light you're meeting into the sky, if any. So I am, I'm pleased with the 30-foot. I think they'll look fine. And I'm looking forward to this project going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Ben?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't have a problem personally with the four waivers that are requested. I do have a question, though. In the staff review, there's a note about discussion, the applicant requesting the parking ratio be 5 to 1,000 square feet, parking versus 4,000 square feet. I guess I'm kind of wondering, does that also mean we need an additional waiver for that item? Why is that, why is that noted specifically? I guess a question for staff.
Just called it out for you all to be aware of it. No, we don't have any ordinance requirements prohibiting over-parking, but I just thought it was important to note, as we are talking about this in conjunction with two other projects. Just for your awareness.
You know, I was reading that backwards. I was reading as if they had requested.
They're adding extra.
More, and I don't know why I somehow get that base of my head. Thank you. Okay. Well, in that case, I think I'm generally satisfied at this point with the project and the waivers. I did have the same question Rachel had about how large the sign would be, and I'm glad we can make sure we have that specified in the motion so that it's not, we're not granting an infinitely large sign.
It's not obesely big.
Yeah. So I think that's, that's where I stand. I think I'm okay with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Ben. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similarly, I I don't have any concerns with any of the waivers. I appreciate the responses that the applicant has put forward. I, in particular, understand the kind of concern around the height of the lighting. That doesn't concern me so much in that, you know, this is a new structure, both in the mixed-use building and for the Market Basket. So altogether, yeah, no concerns on my end and happy with the waivers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Tyler. Roger, and then I'll get to you, Rachel.
Just a question, Dan. Are any of these sites that are going to, are going to be developed around the Downs, you know, the center, like Market Basket and the five-story building? Is, tell me five-story.
It is, yeah.
Are they going to require preloading?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're actively kind of working on that currently with some of the structures. So, but, yes.
All right, thanks.
Rachel?
Yeah, this is just me making a specific statement of position, I guess. And that is what Roger reminded me of, the number of times we've had the requests come through for taller light poles, 30 feet rather than 20 feet. And as my memory goes, each time the developer has said, and we would lose X number of parking spaces. Let me make it clear that in my discussion of this and my decision, your loss of parking spaces really does not enter into my decision. If I thought 20 feet were better, I wouldn't care if you lost 50 spaces. To me, that's not a reason to change the height of the lights or to get a waiver. You proved your waiver in other ways. So I I don't want to, it sound as though every time it comes through, it's kind of automatic that we go with 30. Because that doesn't enter, the parking count does not enter into my decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Anyone else? I'll just end the the planning board comments. You know, you you come to the board quite a bit, lots going on in the Downs. You're working to perfection in getting your ducks in a row, so to speak, and appreciate that. It does minimize the need for lots of long discussions. Keep doing your homework. And let's see if we can continue to build responsibly, resiliency included with sustainable practices. This, this is going to be a value add to our town. So appreciate the efforts you've done. With that, I move to approve the project titled Market Basket Lot 10, proposed by DSM Realty. The project is depicted.
Mr. Chair? If I could just ask, I guess it's a matter of protocol. We've got one member who has indicated he does not wish to vote in favor of the light fixture change on the waiver.
So would you like to take votes on the waivers first?
Yes.
Okay, I respect that. So colleagues, we have four waivers. Just very quickly, can we do roll call vote on the waivers? Doreen? I I guess it'd be simple to do one, two, three, and four and go down the row with roll call.
Would you let me, excuse me, read each waiver and then do a roll call?
For the record, that'd be good. Yep.
So waiver number one, chapter 405B, section 12.5, sign regulations allows the planning board to approve increases to the maximum sign sizes in conjunction with site plan approval for wall-mounted signs on buildings 20,000 square feet or greater. The applicant is requesting a waiver for the size of the wall signage for the Market Basket logo on the front facade of the building in order to ensure the scale of the signage is complementary to the overall design. I would like to add that the size of the sign is based on the packet's middle.
Thank you. Roll call on that one?
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Henrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Roger Bailey?
Yes.
And Bennett Clannister?
Yes.
Waiver number two, chapter 405B, section 4B8, parking lot landscaping required requires one planting island to be provided for every 15 parking spaces in a parking lot. The applicant is requesting a waiver to provide a 20-foot median landscaped island near the center of the site instead, as providing the required number of planting islands would reduce the total number of parking spaces by 10. The proposed median approach complies with the 85% maximum impervious coverage.
Thank you.
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Henrickson?
Yes.
Roger Bailey? Roger Bailey?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
Number three, chapter four oh five B, section four B nine, foundation landscaping required requires all paved surfaces excluding those adjacent to service areas and/or the rear buildings of parking areas to be separated from building foundations by a minimum five-feet landscape strip and a five-foot walkway. The applicant is requesting a waiver for the full five feet between the parking areas and the building foundation in order to locate sidewalks adjacent to the building edge where needed.
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Roger Bailey?
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
Number four, chapter four oh five B, section four D nine G, fixture height and placement requires parking area light fixtures to have a maximum overall height of twenty feet. The applicant is, the applicant is requesting a waiver to provide light fixtures that are thirty feet high, thereby reducing the total number of pole fixtures from forty-five to thirty-one, a reduction of fourteen.
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
No.
Roger Bailey?
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
Thank you. Does that mean I don't have to read those when I do the motion? Because we got that right, right? Excellent. Thank you. I hope that was a streamlined process. So now I will move to approve the project title Market Basket Lot Ten, proposed by DSM Realty. The project is depicted in plan sets prepared by Goral Palmer dated four thirty twenty-five. The application is approved with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. The findings, the project will be approximately eighty thousand square foot supermarket, Market Basket, located in the Downs Development on Proposed Lot Ten of Town Center. The planning board finds the project meets the requirements of the site plan review and zoning ordinances with the following waivers and conditions. All the waivers have received approval. So we'll move to the conditions. Number one, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to the scheduling of a pre-construction meeting. A, address comments in the planning memo dated five nineteen twenty-five. Address comments in the Haley Ward memo dated five six twenty-five. Address comments in the traffic review memo dated five five twenty-five. Address planning board comments discussed at the five nineteen meeting. This includes the sign waiver size shall be based on the submittal package and lighting fixtures W one and W two changed to eighty C R I and three thousand Kelvin. E, record the towns, the Downs Town Center Second Amended Subdivision Phase Three prior to scheduling the construction meeting. F, coordinate with public safety to develop a master addressing plan, including potential massing and number allocations. G, provide final approval from Scarborough Sanitary District. H, provide a performance guarantee for the cost of the construction for off-site improvements. This shall be a hundred and fifty percent of the estimated value of construction. Provide, I, provide the final full plan set to the planning department. This shall include all site civil plans, landscape plans, lighting plans, and architectural renderings and elevations. J, the applicant shall execute a storm and record a storm maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the storm maintenance agreement is located in Appendix One of the Town of Scarborough, Chapter Four Nineteen Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. K, payment of the Chapter Four Nineteen Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and reporting fee, which totaled seven hundred and fifty dollars. Let's see, L, payment of all review fees and invoices. This shall be reviewed by the planning department prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy department. The applicant shall, A, reach substantial completion of roadway infrastructure as approved as part of the Town Center subdivision and as reviewed by the Engineering and Public Works Department. This includes, but is not limited to the future public roadway between the Loop Road and the Innovation District Roundabout. B, submit evidence in the form of a letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities or supervised the plan in facilities construction implementation. The letter or plan shall be certified, shall certify that the stormwater management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-manage, post-construction stormwater management plan, and they will function as intended by said plan. C, provide an as-built plan for the site, including survey elevations of the new wall. This shall confirm the wall was built to plan and function as intended and is subject to review and approval by the Engineering and Technical Services and Planning Departments. D, request an inspection by the planning department to ensure compliance with this planning board approval. That's the motion.
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Roger. Get your name in the minutes. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, and I'm looking at you too, Tyler. Doreen, you want to take the role?
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
No.
Roger Bailey?
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
Welcome Market Basket to the town of Scarborough.
Thank you very much.
Keep the prices down, don't, don't, don't force the tariffs on us. All right, let's move to point, four point oh four, M and R Holdings LLC, Goral Palmer, PCA, and Wilder on behalf Crossroad Holdings LLC Lot Two. Town Center District are requesting a site plan review for a proposed new retail building and mixed-use building located on Scarborough Downs Road Assessor's Map R fifty-two. This is Lot Four.
Autumn, I believe you're taking this one?
Yes, thank you. This, again, we saw this at our last meeting. We also saw it as our sketch plan. This is the site plan for the new retail building and the mixed-use building. This is adjacent to the Market Basket side. It has unScarborough Downs Road. This is the one with seventy-six units on top, and it has a pass-through from the parking lot to the, to the street. Again, this is the site plan, and Dan is here to answer any questions. They just have the two waivers requested for this one concerning the parking lot landscaping for the island and the foundation planting.
Thank you. This item is open for public comment. Anybody from the public wishing? Oh, yeah, I guess, Dan, you want to say something? Thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't have too much.
He's really looking so lost up here.
I'll make public comment.
Hey, make it, okay, make some public comment here.
As Autumn indicated, we don't have a lot of other material to cover here. At the last meeting again, which was late, a few things came up we just wanted to touch on. And I, I can share a couple slides. Out of being excessively thorough, we wanted to outline the on-street parking that we're utilizing towards the parking count and to, to demonstrate location, also tracking, so that as other sites come in, you have assurances that we're not double-counting those spaces and/or just being diligent around keeping track of, of spaces. So this wasn't your package, but this highlights the, the two projects so far that have taken some credit or allocating some on-street parking towards the off-street parking requirement. So in blue are the locations of on-street parking close to the mixed-use B and retail A sites and buildings that we would allocate towards the parking requirement. We think it makes a lot of sense because the storefronts actually face the public street. So as is customary in a more urban setting, you probably would, for many visitors, park along the street if they're open before maybe traveling into the rear. And these all are, again, close, especially the mixed-use B site. So there's fifty-six that we're allocating towards these two sites that are before you this evening. And if you remember, Three-I Home allocated three, and you actually re-approved that this evening. So that's shown in red. And that's out of a hundred and fifty-nine that are going to be available. As currently planned, we expect more on-street parking as we get further into the town center phases. But as of right now, there's a hundred and fifty-nine. So this is what's included in the application and how we track. This is, we have a number of scorecards in the Downs around different items. So this is another one in terms of the on-street parking. So we just wanted to make sure the board's aware of that and knows that we're, we're keeping track of that and will continue to do so. The other thing that we just wanted to highlight, and it ties into the Market Basket presentation to a degree, but we have dedicated residential parking for the mixed-use building, and it's in this area here. It's intentionally separated for the, for the, from the rest of the parking with landscaping, with a wider landscaped area and access points, so it's not going to be confusing to customers to feel like they should park there. But the board wanted to ensure we had good paths of access from this parking to the mixed-use building B building. So I highlighted those in blue. And there are sidewalks in both locations that lead you right to the mixed-use building and vice versa. We've also designed the lighting to be pedestrian scale, so it's much lower lighting on the order of ten or fourteen, Drew, ten feet. So it's going to feel like, you brought up, Jim, the pedestrian feel. It's intentionally lower than even the twenty-foot fixtures in the general parking lot so that it's well-lit for safety and also it's a clear path, you know, for pedestrians and pedestrian scale. So we wanted to touch on those things. And I think there wasn't a lot of other, you know, questions that we had from staff comments or the board from the last time, but we're happy to answer questions as you finalize your discussion. I think lastly, and the next, Lot Twelve is on your next agenda item, but I'm happy to answer questions now because we have the plans up as part of that, if you want me to do that. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dan. Now, this is open for public comment. I don't see anybody running up, anybody with a hand up in the virtual lane?
Uh, just Tyler when it gets to.
Okay, well, Tyler, we'll start with you.
Well, I'm honored. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just my only question here, maybe, Dan, if you are able to address this. I know at the last meeting, we talked about some designated sort of delivery areas. Just wanted to know where that's reflected on this, on this slide here, if that's the area between the buildings or where that's located.
Yes, so we actually added a pullout kind of delivery area on the northern end of the mixed-use B building. This was on the last couple submissions, but that came up. We expect that to be kind of day-to-day drop-off deliveries, like a FedEx truck that might be dropping off for a resident package or a business on the ground floor. So that's intended to be kind of day-to-day deliveries. For move-ins, we've been coordinating with our property management company, and they're going to be managing the parking spaces and delivery times closer to the main entrances to the lobbies that go to the upper stories. And so we have a management plan around when deliver, when move-ins can happen, time of day, and scheduling so that those can actually be reserved for move-ins for residents. And so that's not shown on the plan, but we have a procedure in place that will, will address that.
Great. Thank you, Dan. And, Mr. Chair, that's, that's all I had. I, I do wonder if the, that procedure is something we would sort of note on as a condition of approval or if that's not relevant to kind of a notation there, of which I will defer to the wiser minds of my colleagues. So, Mr. Chair, thanks so much for letting me go first. That's all I had.
Thanks, Tyler. I think we have to kind of leave that up to the management company to, to develop a way in which they can manage the, the traffic flow on move-ins and move-outs and what have you, so.
I would just say that, that that's used commonly now in just residential buildings. So there's a whole management plan for when people are moving in to not have vehicles parked at the, at the primary entrances to the building. So they have a lot of practice is my, is my point.
Okey-dokey. Well, I think I'll go next if my colleagues are all right with that because I only have really one kind of concern, and that is with the, the, the parking area that is designated for residents. And, and this goes to a lot of what I see in downtown Portland and what have you. People will park wherever there's an open parking spot, whether they belong there or not. And I, I know I can't, all I'm trying to do is air that I really, really feel like there needs to be some sort of gated system for the residents. If I was going to live there, I want to make sure that I have a parking spot. And with lots of activity that's going to happen here, which is good, we want to see a robust community involvement and, and moving around in the space. I just feel like people see an open spot, they don't care that it's not, it's attached to some residential. They're going to park there. And I, I would really urge the developer to consider some sort of modern gating for the residents that are going to call this place their home, and they want to feel like they'll get into their space. It's, it's on you guys, it's on your management team to ensure that you have customer satisfaction, or you'll find that you'll have vacancies. But I just want to make sure I'm on record to say, I love this project, I love that mixed-use building, the design, the flow, the, the, the pattern of pedestrian traffic. It, it's, it's going to meet the needs of, of the folks here in Scarborough. But I'm just concerned that residents will get the short end of the stick when it comes to parking. So with that, I will open this up to my other colleagues. Rachel?
Yeah, I have questions about the, the parking too. What are going to be the parking hours in the non-residential area and the hours on-street? Do cars have to be removed at a certain time?
The on-street ultimately is going to be a town responsibility right now because that's a public street. So right now, there's people, I think there's a limitation on overnight parking, but it's not really enforced because there's not really a problem, like it's not enforced like Higgins Beach or Pine Point. But there's also snow bands, so there's a requirement to move your vehicle when snow removal needs to happen. In terms of in the parking area, in the parking lot, for non-residential, there, there are not going to be limitations on hours so that there, I mean, people could park there any hour.
Overnight? They can park overnight. In other words, somebody who's maybe a visitor someplace.
So the, the layout is, and again, a lot of this is property management responsibility in terms of who's parking where. But the layout is that there's dedicated residential parking that Rick was talking about. We're going to, and the property management group is looking at technology to deal with enforcement in terms of both cameras, they, they haven't selected their means of enforcement. It could be gates, it could also be if you don't have a pass or, or rights to park there, then you can be towed. So there's a variety of ways that they're looking at ensuring it's not taken by customers. And then there's the non-residential parking, which is really dedicated to shoppers. Those go into the commercial establishments. But there can be some sharing, so there can be some residential folks that park there. And then there's on-street that we've covered, and then we have the satellite parking area that's north of Retail A, and that's dedicated for. and that's dedicated for employees that work within the commercial businesses. So they'll be required to park there to not occupy the, the large parking field intended for customers as well as visitors to the residents.
Let me get back to the, the question. Except for the residential parking area, is there overnight parking going to be allowed in the rest of the parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay. The next question I have is, you're, you're claiming fifty-six of spaces on-street. How are they going to be marked?
They're not.
So how do you know they're yours? And how do you know they're going to be available to the, the people for this development, for the mixed-use building?
It's based on the requirement for off, for parking, off-street parking. The town has a formula for how many parking spaces you need based on use. And so we're meeting that requirement both.
Well, you're meeting the requirement, but then you're, you're allowing anybody to use it so that it's not really available necessarily for the people it's intended for.
But there's additional spaces that are available.
Well, you say there's, there's going to be a hundred and, a hundred and some on-site spaces, but you're claiming fifty-six on the street.
Right.
Which you're not going to hold, you're just saying those are ours and anybody parks there at any time?
It's like an urban setting where you have a certain amount of parking that might be behind a restaurant, and then you have a certain amount of parking on the street. You don't reserve the parking on the street for that restaurant. It, people, if it's open, you park there. If it's not, you go another block down, or you go on, in the parking lot to the rear. So it's the same type of situation.
But did the, did the restaurant laid, laid, laid claim to those spaces? In other, I, I, it's a, I think on-street parking and claiming on-street parking is a problem. Because it's, it's on paper, and that's all it is. It's a paper claim. Anybody uses it, and it doesn't necessarily, let's say, there's a giant event in the town center and the green space. It's on a Saturday, and all the residents are home, and all of the shoppers are there, and there's another thousand people in the, in the town center area, and they've already filled up the shared area for Intermed. And they're, they're going to take all of the spaces on the street, and the the businesses are going to start saying, we're the people coming in to us, they're all going someplace else, and, and the people is going to stop complaining about no parking. That's what I'm saying. So I, I just, I, I understand you're claiming it. I understand in effect it meets the ordinances. I think it presents a problem. It's a paper claim. Actually, I have no other questions. I like the building, I like the design. I think it's thoughtful. I wouldn't mind living there myself, but I'm not going to. You know, but I think it will contribute very substantially to the environment in, in the new town center. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Rachel. All right. You look like you were going there, James.
Well, I mean, the concerns I have was about parking, but Rachel Elkhorn, we put them together, so. I mean, there is over full of parking in Market Basket right next door as well, that people will likely go into. But I, I don't have any further comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Roger?
I don't have any comments either.
Thank you. Ben?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have many comments either. I just, I agree with the Zestman said it's a very attractive-looking building, and it's going to make a good addition to downtown. Parking's always going to be a concern downtown. I hope that it, just on your mind as you continue developing, making sure that we have enough spaces. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Roger?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I want to be brief because of the reflections are so lengthy.
Please. Thank you for that re- recognition. All right. Thank you, thank you, folks. With that, I move to approve the project titled Down, Downs Town Center Lot Two, proposed by Crossroad Holdings LLC. The project is depicted in plan set prepared by Goro Palmer dated four thirty twenty-five. The application is approved with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings: The retail building will be a single-story structure of approximately forty-six thousand three hundred and fifty square feet of floor area and is being designed to accommodate three to five separate retail tenants. This building will be located along Scarborough Downs Road. Access to the retail shops will be provided through an internal private access drive and walkway within the center, along with extensive sidewalk connections from Scarborough Downs Road and Market Street. The mixed-use building will be approximately seventeen thousand five hundred square feet with ground-floor restaurant, retail restaurant space that also includes lobby elevator stairways and service areas, including a pedestrian pass-through and four upper stories with seventy-six residential units. These units are split between ten studio units, thirty-eight one-bedroom units, and twenty-eight two-bedroom units. The building's frontage will face Scarborough Downs Road with an internal access from the shared parking lot on the other side of the building. Seventy-six rate of growth permits will be allocated from the CPD pool. The planning board finds that the project meets the requirements of the site plan review and zoning ordinances with the following waivers and conditions. Waivers: One, Chapter four oh five B, Section four B eight. Parking lot landscaping required requires one planting island per fifteen parking spot spaces. The applicant is requesting a waiver to provide a larger centralized landscape island instead. Waiver number two, Chapter four oh five B, Section four B nine. Foundation landscaping required requires all paved surfaces excluding those adjacent to the service areas and/or the rear of the buildings of parking areas to be separated from building foundations by a minimum of five-feet landscape strip and five-foot walkway. The applicant is requesting a full, a waiver for the full five feet between the parking areas and the building foundation in order to accommodate, in order to locate sidewalks adjacent to the building edge where needed. Conditions: Prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. A, address comments in the planning memo dated five nineteen twenty-five. Address comments in the Haley Ward memo dated five six twenty-five. Address comments in the traffic review dated five six twenty-five. All right, we're gonna go right on to D, record the Downs Center, Town Center Second Amended Subdivision Phase Three prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Oh, wow. Now we're back to A? I just noticed that. Yeah, I'll just read it. Another, okay, and we're, we're still on the conditions here. Record the Downs Town Center Second Amended Subdivision Phase Three prior to scheduling pre-construction meeting. Coordinate with public safety to develop a master addressing plan, including potential massing and number allocations. Provide additional analysis and design for the addition of a dedicated right-turn lane from Payne Road onto Scarborough Downs Road prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Provide final approval from the Scarborough Sanitary District. Provide the full, final full plan set to the planning department. This shall include all site and civil plans, landscape plans, lighting plans, and architectural renderings and elevations. The applicant shall execute a and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in Appendix One of the Town of Scarborough's Chapter four nineteen Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. Payment of the four nineteen, Chapter four nineteen Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and Reporting Fee total seven hundred and fifty dollars. Payment of all review fees and invoices. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall reach substantial completion of the roadway infrastructure as approved as part of the Town Center subdivision and as reviewed by the Engineering and Public Work Department. This includes, but is not limited to the future public roadway between the Loop Road and the Innovation District Roundabout. Submit evidence in a form of letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who has prepared the post-construction stormwater maintenance, management plan and its associated facilities, or supervise the plan in facilities, construction, and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the stormwater management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan, and they will function as intended. We're not doing that part. She crossed it off. Provide an as-built plan for the site, including survey elevations of the new SWAL. This shall conform with the SWAL, this shall confirm the SWAL was built to plan and function as intended and is subject to review and approval by the Engineering, Technical Services, and Planning Departments. Request an inspection by the planning department to ensure compliance with this planning board approval. That is the motion. I would entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you, Rachel. Final discussions, seeing none. Doreen, would you take a roll call, please?
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Roger DeWilly?
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Dan, you got one more, I believe. So don't leave. We're on that was, we're on four point oh five MR Holdings LLC, and Goro Palmer on behalf of Crossroads Holding LLC, Lot Twelve. Town Center District is requesting site plan review for a proposed ninety-seven space satellite parking lot located on Scarborough Downs Road, Assessor's Map R fifty-two, Lot Four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the satellite parking lot for the project, and as Dan mentioned, this is set aside for employee parking. And I did want to add, I didn't add at the last one, but the EV changes were approved at council. So the proposed site plan changes that were utilizing the new EV ordinance is now official, and that was approved. This is where they will have the majority of their EV charging spaces for the project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much else to add. Change we made, I think from the last meeting, was to reroute the walkway, per staff recommendations, to have a more direct and comfortable walk through the crosswalk to lead you down to the, the buildings as destinations versus the design we had. So with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Thank you, Dan. This item is available for public comment. Anybody wishing to make public comment, please step up. Anybody online?
No one. Their hands up.
Very well, then I'm going to close public comment and turn this over to the board with no particular order. We've seen this, but Rachel, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I, I noticed that you took a look at parking duration and that it's not going to be strictly limited. And so I assume that employees will receive notice about what the rules are?
Yes.
Okay, and it says appropriate enforcement actions will be taken if long-term parking interferes with regular use. Could you define long-term?
Yeah, if someone's parking there and maybe using it as a commuter lot or an extended period of time, and they're not employee or a visitor to the project. So we're gonna, property management will be monitoring the, the, the use of the lot.
Okay, but it's going to basically be open twenty-four hours a day? Accessible twenty-four hours a day?
Yep.
All right, yeah, I suspect you're going to see commuter parking in there. All right, that's the only question I had.
Thanks, Rachel. Nothing, James? Roger? Almost had. Tyler, Ben? I don't have.
Nothing from me, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. I don't have anything as well. I think, I mean, this is a needed, a needed area or this development, so appreciate the Downs and the team taking this lot and making it available for employees so that the businesses can be served by the patrons, or the patrons can use the, the businesses. So with that, I move to approve the project titled Downs Center, Town Center Lot Twelve, proposed by Crossroad Holdings. The project is depicted in plan set prepared by Goro Palmer dated four thirty twenty-five. The application is approved with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings: The parking area will provide ninety-seven parking spaces and is located across the unnamed Loop Road from Lots Two and Ten in Lot Twelve of the Downs Town Center. The planning board finds this project meets the requirements of the site plan review and zoning ordinances with the following waivers and conditions. Waivers, Chapter four oh five Bs, Section four B eight. Parking lot landscaping required requires one planting island to be provided for every fifteen parking spot spaces. In the parking lot, the applicant is requesting a waiver to relocate the required islands to a larger island near the front of the site west of the ADA parking. Providing the islands as required would reduce the total parking on the site by four spaces. Conditions: Prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. The below must be addressed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Record the Downs Center Second Amended Subdivision Phase Three prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Provide a full, final full plan set to the planning department. This shall include all site and civil plans, landscape plans, lighting plans, and architectural renderings and elevations. The applicant shall execute a and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in Appendix One of the Town of Scarborough's Chapter four nineteen Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. Payment of the Chapter four nineteen Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and Reporting Fee total of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Payment of all review fees and invoices. This shall be reviewed by the planning department. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit evidence in the form of a letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities, or supervised the plan in facilities, construction, and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the stormwater management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan, and they will function as intended by said plan. Provide an as-built plan for the site, including survey elevations of, of the new SWAL. This shall confirm the SWAL was built to plan and function as intended and is subject to review and approval by the Engineering, Technical Services, and Planning Department. Request an inspection by the planning department to ensure compliance with this planning board approval. That is the motion?
Okay.
Thank you, Roger. Final discussions, seeing none. Doreen, another roll call, please.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
James Hebert?
Yes.
Roger DeWilly?
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
Thank you, folks. My voice is a little hoarse, and I know it's not eight-thirty yet, but I could use just a five-minute bio break if you're all amenable to that, and then we'll pick up the last item. Excuse me? Roger wants to get going. Oh, well, take a quick five, Ben, Roger. Thank you. We'll stand in recess for five. Item number 4.06, Terradyne Consultant Incorporated, on behalf of 121 and 151-2-Rod Road LLC, is requesting site inventory analysis review for a commercial plan development located at 121 and 151-2-Rod Road Assessor's Map R32, Lot Numbers 22 and 22A. I believe, yes, right. Helen, you've got this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, as you said, the applicant is requesting site inventory and analysis approval for a planned development at 121 and 151-2-Rod Road. This is a three-step process, so it starts with site inventory and analysis, followed by a master plan and then site plan review, so we'll see them again for those steps in the process. They're subject to the light industrial zoning requirements, as well as Chapter 7E of the zoning ordinance, which is additional requirements for planned developments, and the applicant is available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Helen. Uh, for the applicant.
Hi, thank you very much, thanks Helen. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Mike Tadamo-Wieland, I'm a civil engineer with Terradyne Consultants. I'm here with the applicant and owner, Daniel Dickinson. But I'll, I'll run through just a short presentation on our site inventory analysis. I'm going to share my screen here. I have, have the two plans that were submitted digitally, in case it's easier for uh, those at home, those on Zoom watching, so. So I'll wait for that to load up here, there it is. So as, as Helen mentioned, this is a, this is a planned development, and what makes it a planned development is it's a, it's a parcel of a certain size, greater than five acres, in the light industrial district. So the ordinance requires that it go through this planned development process. And the first stage, which we're at tonight, is the site inventory and analysis. So the two plans that we submitted as part of this application include a site inventory plan and then a slightly different plan that we're calling a site a site analysis plan. So the first plan, really just inventories, what do we have? And so this is a 52.2-acre parcel, it's actually made up of two parcels, two continuous parcels that are, that are both owned. Well, they're, they're actually under separate ownership, but both, both of the owners are controlled by, by the applicant, Mr. Dickinson. So I'll talk about it as, as just one site from, from now on. So it's in total 52.2 acres, it's in the light industrial zone, it's also in the rural farming overlay zone. This board, I, I know, will probably get its bearings best if it's described as the site behind the recently approved FedEx facility. So the, the, the old Beechridge Motor Speedway is just to the north of this site. Two-Rod Road is, is, borders the site to the west. The Turnpike borders the site to the south, and there's some undeveloped land to the east. Another feature to note that is there's a, there's a 100-foot wide CMP transmission easement that runs along the southern border, so it's parallel to the, to the main Turnpike. Um, and, and there is, in fact, a trans, overhead transmission line there that's, that's maintained by CMP. The site's entirely forested, with the exception of that CMP corridor. Some timber has been, been harvested, but it remains a forested site. Wetlands were, were mapped, as well as vernal pools in 2022. And what, on, on this site analysis plan, you'll see the wetlands in blue. So that, that sort of blue shaded area, those are wetlands, there's about 13 acres of wetlands on these 52 acres. And there are two vernal pools. And one of them met the criteria for significance from the DEP. And just for those of you, in case you're unfamiliar, that means there was a, a certain number of indicator species were identified in the pool. It was studied in the springtime. And enough of those creatures were, were observed, that it meets a certain criteria and is under a, a higher level of protection by the DEP. So again, that's considered a significant vernal pool. And that one, that's, that's this purple area adjacent to Two-Rod Road, directly adjacent to Two-Rod Road. And, and there's, that, that wet area actually extends onto the other side of Two-Rod Road. I suspect that road, construction of that road probably created those, that pooling there, and, and over time, it's turned into habitat. The, the other vernal pool, which does not meet the criteria for significance, but is a vernal pool nonetheless, is, is located within that CMP corridor, so it's down at the southern southern end of the site, adjacent to the Turnpike. And from, from the DEP's perspective, and I, I believe from this, from the Town of Scarborough's perspective, that's just a freshwater wetland, again, because it doesn't meet, didn't rise to the, the level of being a significant vernal pool, which would qualify it as significant wildlife habitat. The zoning ordinance, one of, one of the quirks of this parcel is the zoning ordinance does not allow access from Two-Rod Road. So the only access to this site is available via a access easement that the applicant has negotiated with the developers of the FedEx, or the owners of the, the FedEx parcel, I'll call it. I think this board is probably familiar with that, because it, it, I believe it was a condition of approval of that, of that FedEx project. The location that was shown on the plan submit, that we, that we submitted has, has been revised since this was submitted, it's a little bit of a moving target. The easement, I'm, the easement's currently shown kind of at the, at the western boundary, entering the, the northwestern corner of the site. And it, it, it crosses and enters right into a pretty large wetland area there. The next version, another version, or the, the newest version of that, has this easement swinging a little more north and crossing an off-site wetland at a narrow, much narrower portion of the wetland, and entering on to, to this project's site in an upland area. So that'll show up on the, on our next iteration, which will be a master plan, of course. I will jump to the next plan, which is very similar plan, but what I've done here, I've just highlighted areas that are unencumbered by either freshwater wetlands. Of course, there's a 25-foot buffer around all these wetlands, all the freshwater wetlands, as a result of the, the, the recent ordinance changes. Also not included in the, the green areas, which are, again, identified as developable areas, is a 250-foot buffer around the significant vernal pool. That's the area that the DEP considers the critical, critical terrestrial habitat for the, the species that use that as, as breeding in, a breeding area, and, and as habitat throughout the lifespan. Obviously, the, the, the access easement through the FedEx parcel really constrains this site to, to one point of access. And so that's, that's kind of a fixed, fixed value there. And of course, we're showing some wetland crossings, or some potential locations for wetland crossings to, to move between these developable areas. And, and sort of schematically, we're showing them in some of, in the narrowest, in, in those narrow, narrow areas of wetland impact. So obviously, the goal here is to impact as little of the wetland as possible, uh, while still being able to develop some of these upland areas. And finally, a, a, one more requirement of the ordinance that I'll, I'll mention is is 100-foot vegetated buffers adjacent to, uh, public roads. So that means the entire frontage on Two-Rod Road and the entire frontage on the Turnpike have a, have a 100-foot vegetated buffer, and, and where, where this is forested, we're, we believe just leaving it as is is probably the best course of action, you know, to, to build a uh, an adequate buffer there. So as you can see, we, we really haven't gotten much into design, we've just kind of tried to figure out what we have and try to identify what the constraints are and what some areas of opportunity are. And so we're really interested in hearing from the board what your priorities are in, in development of this site, and we'll, we'll listen intently to that and then develop a master plan and come back to the board with that. So that wraps up my presentation, and I'll turn it back to the board, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This project is open for public comment. Anybody wishing to make a public comment, please come up.
Here we go again. Denise Hamilton, Two-Rod Road, and I have requested previous to this meeting accommodations to speak on behalf of my husband and me, who is unable to speak or attend these meetings.
Yeah, we're doing this for, because of medical reasons and, and
Right.
we clearly understand the, the circumstances.
Thank you. Obviously, what I've written was before any comment by the representative. I'm here as a concerned resident to highlight several key issues regarding the proposed development and road easement under review, the limited resources submitted since it's only the first phase. The town engineer has indicated in their comments that the proposed road easement runs through a low-lying area of the parcel that includes wetlands. Placing a roadway here would directly disturb the sensitive environment. There has been some suggestion for shifting the easement further west, but that would bring the road even closer to established residences, introducing increased noise and disruption to the neighborhood. Neither placement is appropriate. In fact, the easement should have been established during the first phase of the FedEx project, so they shared the curb cut as indicated in the ordinance. While the wetland ordinance typically applies to structures, it was enacted to protect wetland function and ecological integrity, concerns that are equally relevant to roadway construction. Roads can fragment habitat, alter natural drainage, and contribute to runoff and contamination, all of which undermine the purpose of wetland protection. Though that not explicitly written for roads, the wetland ordinance reflects the town's commitment to preserving these sensitive areas. Therefore, this proposed roadway should be held to the same level of scrutiny and restraint under that ordinance's intent. Additionally, the town engineer has referenced data from the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife's online mapping tool, which identifies this area as an undeveloped habitat block. That designation underscores the ecological value of this land, paving a road through it, especially one designed to support commercial or industrial traffic. Building a structure risks fragmenting wildlife habitat and degrading the natural resources we as a town have long valued and worked to preserve. Another point I must respectfully correct relates to statements made by the developer's representative. It has been claimed that there are no direct residential abutters to the project. This is simply not true. The NAPI residence identified on tax map R032021, which was my husband's grandfather's former residence, clearly shares the northern property line parcel R032022. Any assertion to the contrary either ignores or misrepresents the actual configuration of the properties and the people who live there. Also, the property, the road easement goes through about several residents. I understand the challenges the planning board faces in balancing growth with preservation, and I recognize that in many cases, boards like this one feel pressured to accommodate development. But I also believe that this board has a responsibility to consider the broader impact on the community, especially when dealing with sensitive environmental areas and existing neighborhoods. The ordinance explicitly prohibits access from Two-Rod Road to undeveloped The ordinance explicitly prohibits access from Two Rod Road to undeveloped land in the light industrial zone. And this restriction must be upheld without exception. No access, including emergency only access, should be permitted under this provision. Allowing any form of entry would directly violate the ordinance and set a precedent that undermines its intent by long range planning to protect our neighborhood. Lastly, I'd like to remind the board of repeated public comments made by the developer over the past one to two years stating a willingness to bring public water and sewer to this area. If any development is approved on this land, I strongly encourage the board to hold the developer to that commitment. Thank you, and I ask you to proceed with great caution and a commitment to protecting both our residences and our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Anybody?
Chief, you can speak.
Forgive me, I've named my computer chief and I didn't have to log in with my name.
Is that you, Marvin?
That is me, Marvin.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I take a lot of ribbing for that, chief. I'm embarrassed a little bit, but again, it's my computer. There isn't a lot to say about this because there are no plans. It's, it's generally the idea of, of developing this. I understand the light industrial district overlay. I question it, you know, as a, as a resident that maybe this parcel wasn't fully vetted as far as that designation is concerned, but be that as it may. I was interested in the engineer's report and the previous commenter, by the way, who I have a lot of respect for, referenced it as well. And it's the, in the engineering report, the general comments having to do, general comment number two, having to do with the undeveloped habitat block. And I've done a little, looked into that as I'm sure you have as well. And can't find out too much. I'm sure you can find out a lot more, forgive me. But it does seem as though this area is significant in moving habitat from one place to another, particularly as it, as the presenter told us, completely forested. So I just hope that you'll look at this very carefully regarding that general comment number two from the engineer. And otherwise, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin, not chief.
Correct, Marvin Gates, 423 Black Point Road. Forgive me.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No.
No? Okay. So I'm closing public comment. I do want to recognize that we received one written comment dated May 19th, 2025, from Dale McConnell Tem. So we will have that entered into the, the project package and we will use that as reference as well. With that, I'll turn this over in no particular order. This is a inventory and analysis of the site. But I think it would be helpful if Autumn, you want to just kind of show that change in the easement that's been worked out between the applicant and the FedEx.
Yes, this is the exhibit that was approved with FedEx. And it shows through our conversations with them where that easement was brought down. So it did not just go along the property line. So this is where that they'll tie in to this property back here. Everybody can see that. So it originally followed the property boundary and that's what they had showed on their original documents. But since then, this is what was approved.
Okay, so it's a much smaller impact on that, that particular wetland.
Smaller crossing and it doesn't enter right into a wetland.
Right, right. Anybody wanting to?
Go ahead, Rachel.
Yeah. When we did the site analysis for the FedEx, we were taking a look at a place that had prior construction. And in this case, we're looking at a place that I assume has had no prior construction. Is that correct? There's been no housing on there since the Revolutionary War?
Not that I'm aware of.
We usually ask, you know, that somebody do an, check with the archaeologists just to see if there's any possible area on a site that might have value, archaeological value. So I would expect to, to see some sort of a confirmation of that. I'm also looking at the teeny tiny print on your one of two designs. It says it has the soils legend. And am I looking, seeing correctly that there are three specimen trees there?
There are, so we, we have located a number of specimen trees and trees larger than 24 inches in diameter on, on the site. So any, any of the symbols that are, that are showing up as trees are, meet that criteria, are of significant size.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm only seeing three presented here.
I think there are some out, like, I think there are some in the buffer areas adjacent to Two Rod Road. I think there, there are several more.
That would be helpful to see. I would also echo the comments from the public. If this is a habitat area, what, what is there there? Do we have bats? Do we have cotton tails? Deer coming through, turkey coming through? And what, and what sort of connection might this land have with other open areas and, and wildlife areas? So that's something for you to take a look at. I'm concerned about the amount of soil with poor drainage. Are you going to have to bring in a lot of preload?
We don't, we're, we're not anywhere near that point yet. That depends on how, what the buildings are, how heavy the buildings are. The soils that are shown on that, on the, the plan we presented are a medium intensity soil survey, which is not always accurate. It's not based on testing that's been done on the ground. That, that's, that's the next step for us.
All right, so we, we will be seeing.
Yes, so.
The results of that.
Any development out here will, will have onsite wastewater disposal. And so test pits will certainly have to be done for that to, to confirm that there is suitable, there are suitable soils for that as well.
How about access to potable water?
Access, there is.
Have you done any, any examination? So you're gonna have to do that too?
Yeah, I mean, yes, absolutely. This is step one of a long process.
I'm just making sure that you understand what the long process is going to be, what our expectations might be for that. So now it's on the record. I think I have covered the areas of concern that, that I had. I, I, I am worried about the amount of wetlands, but we will have to take a look at what your plan is to, to handle access and handle crossings and handle all sorts of preservation issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll mimic my colleagues' concerns about the historical impact. Last year or two, with the rugby field across the street, there's a study conducted about possible cemetery in that area. It wasn't found. So with any kind of future progress with this site, like to see documented an effort to, to determine whether or not that cemetery may have been on this side of the road, on this property in that corner or wherever it may be. Just again, to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and making sure that the study has been conducted properly for the sake of our historical society and others. I'll note that in, in section 601 of our, our ordinances, Two Rod Roads labeled as a location for no-through trucks over 26,001 pounds. Two Rod Road is clearly protected. I don't want to see a waiver or a solution that would include any kind of access on the Two Rod Road with this, with this, with this potential development of this property. You have your easement that goes off the Holmes Road and that's the access that you have to this property. Anything else, I certainly would not support for going on the Two Rod Road. Those restrictions were put in place for a reason. We need to make sure that we maintain those to the best of our ability. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, James. Roger?
Thank you. I don't really have much to say on this. I mean, this is the first step. It's pretty much a blank, you know, slate right here. I mean, it's, it, the next step is going to be the more critical step to see how this all works out. So I, the only comment I would make is I, I want to acknowledge a comment made by Ms. Hamilton. You know, I, I respect you coming before us all the time. I think you make some good points and you're a great advocate for your position. But I have never felt any pressure to, to approve developments in this town. I mean, if, if the applicant meets all the criteria that we demand that they, they do, that's what we go by. So I, I just want to make, you know, just state that I've never felt any pressure to approve a development just because of some outside source, okay? There's actually, there's more cases where there's pressure not to approve it by, you know, people such as yourself. So I just wanted to state that. Otherwise, I have nothing else to say about this.
Thanks, Roger. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm under a void offering you a, a plan because it's not our job. But in general, I would, I would strongly urge you to keep development as far away from the significant vernal pool as possible. And obviously, you're gonna have to fill in some wetlands to do a development here. Limit what you can in wetland development. And it would go a long way towards goodwill towards the neighbors on Two Rod Road to try and keep anything you can as far away from that corner Ms. Hamilton indicated as possible. I know that there was a comment in the peer review regarding potential emergency access along Two Rod Road. I would strongly discourage you from trying to pursue that because it's obviously not permitted. And you would need, if you needed a second access point for emergency, you need to find a different way to do so. And I don't know if that's possible. Maybe a step required, but just keep that in mind. And I know that the property to the east is undeveloped. I don't know if there's any discussion with, it's not main term, I go on to that property directly, right? They own, they want to be on that.
Yes.
But if you needed some kind of emergency access, perhaps that would be the way to do it, would be to go through that property if possible. I don't know. But in general, I mean, as my colleagues have said, there's not a whole lot we can comment on at this point because we don't have any plan to talk about. But just my, my feedback would be to, you know, impacts minimum as much as you can and keep away from the neighbors as best you can. So thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, team. My comments are, are, oh, I'm sorry. I, I forgot about you, Tyler. Go ahead, Tyler. I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's the, the price I pay for being on Zoom, so totally understand. Just two quick questions for the applicant. The first one is, I see the wetland delineation looks like it was done in 2022. Curious if there's any present plans to refresh that or whether that will get refreshed based on kind of what the development plans end up looking like. Just wondering if you can speak to kind of the timing of the wetland delineation and what you'd be looking at in the future.
Sure, yeah. Typically, I think it's, it's pretty commonly accepted by regulators in the state that a, a wetland delineation is good for about five years. That's, that's the, the timeline D E P follows. This, this falls within that timeline. So we consider that it's still valid wetland delineation at this point. Certainly, if for some reason we, we, we got beyond that point without some sort of decision, then, then it would be relooked at.
Understood. And the crossings that are indicated on the plans, are those just sort of identifying the least impact areas of potential crossings? Or are those informed by any existing plans that you would have?
No, that, like I mentioned earlier, we don't have existing plans. They're, they're purely narrow areas of wetlands that connect large areas of upland areas. So that it, they're kind of schematic, schematic locations of where a crossing might make sense.
Okay, great. That is all I had. Thanks for speaking to those and I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Sorry, I forgot looking to look up.
No problem.
My only add to the conversation is there may be some opportunities as you go through the, the phases here that some land could be conserved. And I'd like to have that considered. It, it appears to be somewhat of a challenging parcel. Lots of different ways to cross it. But there's also lots of opportunity around the vernal pool and along Two Rod Road that certainly could be designated as conservation areas and, and put over to the goals of, of the town in its goal setting. So take a look at what opportunities that would bring as you kind of map out the next steps on this. That's my only add-on to the conversation from my colleagues. Anybody else have any last minute thoughts? Because I do have a motion to, I move to approve the project titled Two Rod Road Master Plan Proposed by 121 Two Rod Road LLC and 151 Two Rod Road LLC. The project is depicted in plan sets prepared by Teradyne dated 4/21/25. The application is approved with the following findings and conditions. 121 Two Rod Road LLC and 151 Two Rod Road LLC have requested a site inventory and analysis approval for a planned development at 121 and 151 Two Rod Road. The total area is approximately 52.2 acres. The site inventory and analysis will be followed by a master plan and then site plan. The planning board finds this, the project meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Conditions, one, address comments in the Haley Ward memo dated 5/6/25. Address planning board comments discussed at the 5/19/25 meeting. This includes confirm, number one, confirm with the historical society if there are any known significant sites on the property. Number two, further explore habitat and potential sites constraints. Number three, update the plan set to reflect the access easement from the adjacent property. Number four, highlight the location of specimen trees. Number five, no access will be permitted from Two Rod Road. And number six, consider opportunities for conservation easements. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rachel. Final comments? Doreen, would you take the role, please?
Whitmyn King?
Yes.
Luke Henderson?
Yes.
James Seibert?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
And Bennett Flanders?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you again.
You will.
All right, folks, we're burning right through the agenda. There will be no midnight oil being burnt. Yeah, it sounds like your voice and your, your coughing is going away here, so. Yeah, it sounds like your voice and your coughing is going away here, so.
Tim would love to stay a bit longer.
Oh, well, Tim can't always get what he wants. All right, we'll move on to staff report, miners' development reviews.
None to report.
Administrative amendment report?
None to report.
Any correspondence?
You received one item from Helen.
Yep.
If you had any questions or if you wanted to go over that?
Does anybody wanna, well, Helen, thanks for reaching out. And we raised this, the issue with this development that got denied in Saco. And we asked you to see if there's anything that we needed to maybe do. And I think talking with legal and appreciate your follow-up. And I'll just leave it at that. And if the board has any further questions, feel free to pipe in. Rachel?
Yeah, I don't have questions. I was going to thank Helen for her analysis. It's very helpful to be reminded what our obligations and roles is, just to make sure that we're covering well bases, that we are actually acting as a quasi judicial body. And that sometimes, as a quasi judicial body, you know, sometimes we can be wrong. But we also, as long as we have done our due diligence and exercised our best judgment, we are likely to survive a court challenge. So we just have to remember sometimes to be dispassionate about some of the development that goes on and some of the proposals before us. It's not our job to like something. It's our job to ensure that it meets the ordinances. Thank you, Helen.
Well said and appreciated the efforts. Anybody else?
I have a question, just for my clarity on this. You said in the third paragraph, I just want clarity on this, just so I have clear for myself. The court stated in its August 22, 2024 decision that a planning board is not legally compelled to base its final subdivision approval on its factual findings from its preliminary review. So does that mean, like when we vote on something for preliminary approval?
I think that's what the reference is. Like I said last meeting, that I'm hesitant of doing any sort of preliminary approval going forward, at least while I'm chair.
Yeah, I understood that. And I understood that just because we gave a preliminary approval doesn't like lock us. Okay, thank you. That was the clarity I wanted. And that was my interpretation as well. But I just wanted to state it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's quite possible that we get more information. In other words, you have a preliminary approval and some information comes before you. And it's, a preliminary approval is just that.
Yeah.
And it's not a final, but it raises expectations, which is why we have to be extremely careful to govern everything, to tie everything we say to the ordinances, not to our likes, dislikes, emotions, pressure from this person, or developer pressure from those people. It's immaterial. We just do our due diligence and follow the ordinances, vote the way those decisions lead us. And we are, in a sense, safe.
So like if, but as information, like if new information comes forward or we discover information that wasn't privy to us at the preliminary review, we can use that as a justification if it's warranted to deny it?
If it's warranted. In other words, sometimes, what came before us tonight with Teradyne was an incomplete sort of document. And we provided guidance.
And we approved it with.
And we approved it with conditions. So that doesn't mean we're gonna approve the final project. It means that we approved this step, and they can take the next step. And then the approval of the next step is separate. Each approval level requires more adherence, more detail, more adherence to the ordinances. And as you start to look at applications, as they come through and you get more and more details, you start to see some different things sometimes. As long as you work in good faith and you do your due diligence, which means you read, you read it all, then as a board, we are, in a sense, protected from the court. I mean, the court essentially protects us.
The only one going to jail will be Autumn.
Autumn and Helen, sorry.
Anybody else? But again, appreciate you following up. I do take that back. You know, I was just kidding. No, this is just, this is us talking. But appreciate you following up on that. And I think it helped provide clarity for us. I think we're now to planning board comments. Roger?
Yeah, question for Autumn. The hotel that's being built up on Payne Road by Sebagel Row. You know, when I, okay.
There's several, I'm sorry.
When I went by there recently, it looks like it's, to me, and it might be just because of the phase of construction, but it's just a plain facade. It's just, it's just a large rectangular block. And I mean, we always make a concerted effort to, they have to break up that linear side. So I, you know, I just wondering if somebody might take a look at that.
We'll check it. That one got approved before me, so I don't remember the building design, but I'll check it out.
I mean, it's a, it's a, right there, it's just a plain.
Just plain, yeah.
You know, the way it's structured right now. And whether they're gonna add something to it later on, not, you know, maybe they will.
Yeah, as I recall, there are different colors to it. There's a canopy over the entrance. I know we did make an effort to stop it from being a plain block. So we do need to make sure that they haven't just decided to put down a box.
Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
I regret to announce that I need to resign from the planning board after this meeting. I am moving to York, Maine to visit with my girlfriend. And so unfortunately, I will still work in Scarborough and own property, but I won't be a resident, so I have to resign. I wish I could stay on, but I've learned a lot from the guys, and I really appreciate, you know, letting me, you know, vote with you and all that. And it's been great. So I'm very sorry that I have to do this, but.
If we talked to your girlfriend, would she move to Portland? I mean, would she move here?
She's got a house. I've got a condo. She doesn't like the condo so much. Yeah, I tried.
Go ahead, try, please.
I'll try again, but unfortunately, that's where I'm at. If you let me stay on, because I'm helping a resident, I would, but I don't think that's permitted, so I can't do it. This is the last one, moving in in June, unfortunately. Yeah, I know.
Well, thank you, Ben. Hey, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Well, we were glad to have you. We're sad to see you go.
I have moved back to Scarborough. I'll reapply. How's that sound?
Love the strange things, huh?
Yeah, never know. Sorry.
Well, good luck. Good luck on everything.
Thank you.
I do want to ask one question on the multifamily complex by Eight Corners. Is that still gonna get a pool? Memory serves me that it was gonna have a pool. Yeah, and I'm just kind of confused. Maybe I just need to go, you know, give it a while so they can manicure the area. But I don't see where in the heck they can fit a pool in.
If you're looking at it driving, it's to the right of it.
To the right of the clubhouse or behind it, looking from the road? It's not a huge deal, but I, it just struck me as where the heck are they gonna put this pool? But at any rate, that's all I have. Thank you for getting us out of here at before nine. Good job. And we'll see you in. Man, we need to find a way to simplify. But it's, because we are quasi judicial, you have to spell it all out, and it goes into the record. So I apologize for my bad English and mispronunciation of words, but I'm doing my best.
You're doing great.
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. That was your last official act, Mr. Ben.